This meeting is ordered at seven oh seven P M. Madam Clerk, please. Councilmember Mendoza, here. Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Councilmember Obeza Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Amparano?
Here.
And Mayor Berman?
Here.
Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And can we have the Boy Scout troop forty seventy come up to leave us all the flags in there, please? Can you please stand and join us in pledging our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? Ready, begin.
Great job and thank you, boys. Mister Marita, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor, when you get to the consent, there are a couple of items on the claims and warrants. Number one one zero eight five one payable to Mayor Protem Amparano. And claim number one one zero eight five two payable to councilperson Mendoza. Those will need to be handled separately.
Mister Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
As the council discussed, three items of significant exposure under five four nine five six or five four nine five six point nine B and direction was given to council. That completes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to item D, public appearances. Item D one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do you have any public comments for tonight's meeting? Madam Clerk, did we receive any via email?
None at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to item E, special presentations. E one, National Public Works Week.
Madam Mayor, council, this evening, once again, it is upon us for our annual Public Works Week. And we have for you a short presentation of what we have become from our small community to this thriving community. We have eleven departments under us right now under public work scope, which range from treatment to streets. So we'll have a little presentation, it'll show all that stuff. And then after that, we'll have our chief operator, Robert Emmett, chief operator, Chris Kemp, and our streets division foreman, Isaiah Gonzalez, come up and speak a little bit about each portion of their division that they oversee. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Gonzalez. I'm a public service foreman for the city of Imperial. I've been here since December of two thousand nine, going on fourteen years. I work primarily in the street department while assisting Chris and Robert in their departments as well. I'm gonna talk to you about some of the things we've been doing around town. Crack sealing, we've been doing those subdivisions at a time. Where basically you could fill all the cracks with the rubber mix to prevent, I mean, some of this older area around town's not as good as it should be. But by sealing the cracks, you prevent the water from getting into the dirt and causing the erosion. So that's what we've been doing some of also. We go through about anywhere from twelve to twenty pound, they're thirty pound bricks, twelve to twenty a day. So when we're doing that, we stay pretty busy. Thermoplastic, we've been doing thermoplastic on Aitken as of recent. Today, this morning, we went through about fifteen fifty pound bags from, we got done from Dogwood to Dogwood to eighty six and then from Valory to Austin. Most of the fog lines and the limit lines and like so most of the crosswalks. Sorry. Hot box, so we asphalt too. Have a four ton hot box that we drive to thermal when we usually when we repair a water line, dig up the water line or we dig. We dig, we hydro excavate with the vector. We pull the line or we usually just do, depending on the circumstance, we do the whole thing with the line. Backfill, sand base, usually give it about a week, then we come back and asphalt everything. We drive the thermal to pick it up. We usually take our dump truck, it's about five, five yards. And the hot box is four tons. So whatever we don't use for the day, the hot box will keep it good for about two to three days. So we can patch potholes and everything else the following, next two to three days when we have stuff going. What else do we have? Future plans, we are looking to get a bigger, the way we do the thermal is, it fits the hoppers, the three hundred pound hopper, it fits five, basically six bags. So you cook it, it takes about an hour to cook the five bags. So if there's two to three guys out there, there's two to three guys blowing the streets, getting all the rocks off or what's gonna, and then there's some downtime where you're having to wait an hour for it to cook. And it takes about an hour, depending on how the machine wants to act that day. But future plans, we're looking to upgrade the cooking system where we get a trailer. So we'll have a yellow and a, yellow and a white hopper to cook everything while we're laying everything down with our, it's a Graco three hundred pro melt, but our applicator basically, so we don't have to wait for it to cook when we're putting it down on the ground. And looking also for a mini paver eventually to start doing the problem areas in town where we can get it. I think the one, they look, that's a thirty six to a seventy two inch width. So I should be able to accomplish. Tomorrow, we have a demo for the bigger crack pro machine. It's one with wands. Right now, we have two carts and the guys push a little cart around. This one will come with two wands or basically a gun and you just slide it around, which should be, should be able to get twice. Target seven.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez.
Up next, we have Robert Emmett, our chief water treatment operator.
Hello, my name is Robert Emmett. I'm the chief water operator at the city of Imperial. I see better without my glasses, so I can read better. I'm reversed than most people here, so. I have been with the city for about ten years, working as a water and distribution operator. I'm here today to share with you about the water treatment plant and distribution system and ongoing projects. The purpose of the water treatment plant is to produce safe and sufficient water to the city of Imperial residents as well as for fire suppression. The water plant receives Colorado River raw water through the American Canal, supplying our conventional filtration surface water treatment plant with a design capacity of seven million gallons per day. The raw, excuse me, the raw water is stored in three pond water basins with a total of six million gallons of storage. The water is then pumped into the sedimentation basin where coagulation chemicals are added to start removing undesirable particles such as dirt, algae, and other microorganisms. This is followed by dual media filters, which consist of anthracite, coal, and silica sand that removes the smaller particles that the sedimentation process is not able to do. The next step is sending a portion of the filtered water to the granular activated carbon columns to reduce organic precursor material. The final step is to disinfect the filtered water before sending it to the water distribution system. The water plant is staffed with four certified water treatment plant operators, two maintenance technicians, and a chief water treatment plant operator. Some of the duties are water quality monitoring, operations, and maintenance. This includes collecting daily, weekly, and monthly water samples. Operations require chemical dosage modification, instrument calibrations, and plant adjustments. Routine maintenance includes the upkeep of the equipment and ancillary buildings. After the water has been treated, then it is stored into three distribution reservoir tanks with a total capacity of six million gallons. Each tank can hold two million gallons and one is the water plant, one is at the shop booster station, and the last one is at the Aitken booster station. In the cooler months, the minimum flow is around one million gallons per day and the maximum flow is around four million gallons per day in the summertime. We have around twenty thousand residents and about six thousand seven hundred water service connections for the city of Imperial. Currently, the water treatment plant is being upgraded to further enhance water quality. The addition consists with the construction of a new clearwell, three clearwell pumps, and four additional granular activated carbon columns with needed instrumentation. The project modification will increase our water plant resiliency to current and future regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have our wastewater. Chief operator, Chris Kemp. Evening, council.
Chris Kemp, the chief wastewater operator, for those of you who don't know me, I know James does because he's towing me every other week, it seems like. As mentioned in the slideshow, our new wastewater treatment facility went online near the end of twenty twenty one. It presently has a capacity of two point four million gallons per day and is easily expandable to three million gallons per day. The current flow averages around one point three million gallons daily, which is an increase of about two hundred thousand gallons per day this time ten years ago. So we are growing, but we still have room to spare. Our current staff includes four certified operators, two maintenance employees, and myself. And the good news is, all that money guys spent was well spent. It works great. I love it. I have no buyer's remorse for it. I hope nobody does. It made my life a lot easier. In the future, to better serve the community, we hope to improve upon a couple of things. Firstly, we'd like to add two or more employees in order to create a collections team. Most sewer-related emergency responses are due to the collection system issues, many of which are preventable if more staffing was available, so we could be proactive rather than reactive. Neighboring cities such as El Centro, Brawley, Gallexco, Ho Ville, I'm sure others already have collections teams in place. It gives us an easy template to follow, so we could just call our neighbors and ask what they do. It'll help avoid any further neglect. Second, in the somewhat near future, we hope to add a sludge drying unit to say ahead of California EPA regulations as usual. This unit would heat our sludge hot enough to create a class A waste, which is more widely accepted at landfills currently. It's class B, which means it still has pathogens that could possibly leak in the groundwater. The drying system would remove all that and create a class A waste. Many areas in California already will not accept the quality of sludge our plant produces. It's likely just a matter of time, especially in California, mandatory requirement will be in Imperial County as well. And if we're not prepared, the city will have to begin the high cost process of trucking our waste sludge out of state, which will cost an arm and a leg. And even if we had to do that, sludge dryer would save us money and weight. So I think it's something we could look into in the future. With that, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, for the most part, that concludes our little present, kind of a long presentation. But it's easy for the council to come and come up here and sit up here and thank us for the stuff that we've done. And in return, I would like to say, we actually have to thank you guys. We've had the most supportive council that I've ever been around. And I've worked in a lot of different municipalities. And the fact that we've always had support from you guys and allowed us to grow. We always start the story off saying that, you know, we came here, Jackie was here, Mr. Director Loper was here, you know, before I was, and I came in shortly after him. And as we started expanding and the department started, you know, condensing, you know, we, we didn't have tools, we didn't have any trucks, we didn't have all those neat things that everybody sees out there on the streets now that's making life better for our citizens. And that is, it's come from a lot of, lot of, you know, hard work, a lot of late nights and all that other stuff like that. But mostly it's come from the support of the council and the council wanting to see us to do better, do more, and be more productive and help our community to, to enjoy themselves, be able to walk outside and, you know, enjoy, enjoy being in the city of Imperial. And we want to thank all of you guys for that. So with that, unless you guys have any questions for us, we'll conclude it.
One last thing, though, you have to take a picture with me.
All of you.
All of you.
Including Mister Loper. Can I take a couple of photos? One, two, three. One, two. There we go.
Thank you guys for that presentation.
I'm sure our Boy Scouts loved it. Before we move on to item F, I would like our chief of police to introduce his new officers.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council. It's my pleasure to introduce our newest officer, Daniel Loscheck. Stand up, Daniel. Right behind me is Officer Michael Cortez, who we brought on approximately two months ago. Officer Torres, he's here to make sure we're all doing the right thing. So we're very fortunate. Officer Loscheck comes with a lot of experience. He's also a Valley resident. And we, we got him over here in Imperial and we plan on making him an asset as the same as the rest of our team. So it's with honor to introduce you to our newest officer, Daniel Loscheck.
Hello, city of Imperial. My name is Daniel Loscheck. I'm thirty seven year old, United States veteran. I have been married for seventeen years and I have three kids. After getting out of the Marine Corps, I put myself through the Southwestern College Academy, Police Academy, where later I was hired with the Calipatra Police Department. I served with the city for five years. And after leaving the city, I ended up getting hired with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Now, although I do appreciate the experience and knowledge I received with the Sheriff's Department, it didn't feel like home. So I didn't want to commit to something where I wasn't happy. So I came back home and I was fortunate enough to be hired with Imperial Police Department, where I was able to join their family and now able to serve the city of Imperial.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F. Consent agenda, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do I have a motion for the adjustments?
Motion to approve adjustment. Second.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Can I make a motion to approve warrant one one zero eight five one?
Second.
I have a motion by Obeza Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero and one abstain from Mayor Protem Amparano.
Make a motion to approve one one zero eight five two.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero and one abstain by Councilmember Mendoza.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of that item minus those two warrants.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item G, work session discussion, direction only. Item G one, goal setting and budget performance review for fiscal year twenty three twenty four.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for providing your priorities for the priority matrix. We will be putting all of those into one document as a ballot. So moving forward, we'll be requesting participation from the community. When you see those sent out, in terms of ranking, the various projects and priorities that council has put forward, we'll ask council to rank those that are within the priority matrix themselves. And once it is determined as to what is major priorities, secondary, and what can be accomplished this fiscal year, we'll proceed with, with the work plans and really get into the meat of our budget and how that works for the next fiscal year and, and beyond.
Moving on to item H, action items. H one, termination of emergency at Anthony Redondo Memorial Park, staff report with Mister Self with Public Services.
Mayor Council, we're brought to you for discussion, action, this is cease emergency action of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero six. The repairs have been made to the area and put back into a safe working manner. The fiscal impact was sixty four thousand, six hundred fifty two and forty seven dollars plus our staff and fuel and equipment costs for the city. I stand for any questions.
Do you have any questions from the council? Do you have any questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Amparano and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item H two, ordinance of the city council, amending codified ordinances regarding appointment in term of various boards and commissions, staff report with Mr. Marita and Ms. Turner.
This is actually the, I, I, the third or fourth time that we've seen this. By law, we had to, after making a change, present it for the public to, at the last meeting. This is identical to the one that we had at the last meeting, but we need, do need a vote and then it'll be published and put into place. This is um, just in summary, as it says on the agenda, to have our commission appointments and the planning commission, this ordinance will match them to your council positions here.
Do you have any questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Obeso Martinez. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item I, reports. Do we have any department reports tonight? Mr. Lopez.
So uh, next week, uh, on Saturday, if you haven't marked it on your calendar, we have uh in the park after dark at Eager Park from six to ten. And uh, we also have um, our summer rec guide that's posted. Uh, we've already had several classes fill up. So if you're interested in signing up your kids uh, to our summer programs, please do so uh quick because our classes are filling up.
Do you have any other staff reports? All right, moving on to city manager reports, Mr. Marita.
I think for me this evening.
Moving on to item I three, mayor and council member reports. Do you have any council member reports?
Nothing to report, just a reminder to the public that this is national law enforcement. Uh, it falls within, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the the day of the, the week is the fifteenth and then the whole week is whatever day, whatever week that fifteenth falls in. So um, thank you to all of our law enforcement um officers and, and people that keep us safe and, and putting yourself out there on the line for us and keep to just to make this community a better place. So thank you and pass that along to your staff, please chief.
And Frank?
Absolutely.
Okay. Acevis, if you don't mind. I'm here.
Madam Mayor, uh, council members, chiefs. Uh, my name is Frank Acevis. Um, I'm involved in the Boy Scouts of America um, here in Imperial County. Um, we have a bunch of scouts here tonight and their task and purpose here tonight um, is a requirement for merit, two merit badges that these boys are gonna um obtain towards the end of the summer, but it takes um months to obtain that merit badge. So they have to attend a city council meeting. Um, their troop is sponsored here in the city of Imperial. Um, we have our meetings here weekly. Um, some of the council members um go to those meetings and they're able to um, invite us to this meeting. So we really appreciate it. The boys appreciate this um, this opportunity. Um, just real quick on how, how Boy Scouts um benefits our community, benefits our boys, um community to raise kids, right? It takes a whole community, right? Um, we invest in, in different entities within our community to help people that are disadvantaged, right? And um the community is helping these boys become leaders, right? I'm an Eagle Scout myself, so this is me putting back into our community. Um, being an Eagle Scout helped me get into the military, helped me get into law enforcement, it helped me get into college. So it's if you ask yourself what becoming an Eagle, an Eagle Scout does, how does it benefit you? You know, something, something you're starting as a young boy, right? It's something that you achieve starting at eleven years old and you be, you become an Eagle Scout roughly around fourteen, fifteen, sixteen that you can earn as adolescent, as a teen, preteen. And that you can put on an application and it holds weight. Cause when you apply for law enforcement, fire department, or city government, no one cares that you caught that when you passed at the football game, right? No one cares that you got the home run, you know, that's nice and all that. But when you see that on the application, and when I applied for the career that I'm in, um, I put that I was an Eagle Scout. And one of the gentlemen on my interview panel was an Eagle Scout. And he spoke for about thirty minutes on how hard it was to become an Eagle Scout. And at that moment, I was like, I got this job, right? I was like, I'm in, right? And so um, myself and fathers back there, mothers back there, um, our plan is and our goal, our intent is that every single one of those boys will be an Eagle Scout for your community. Um, and they'll be the community leaders. And what you get out of it is service projects. So our boys have to do service projects, right? So it's a project that will be conducted within your city. Um, and it'll be for the benefit of the community. So it's kind of the selfless service that we teach them at a young age, right? So that we um, we invest in our youth, right? I'm an old man now. There's no use putting money into me anymore, right? Um, we put our money into our youth, we put our energy into our youth, and that's where we get our payback. Your return on investment sitting right back there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, boys.
My attention real quick.
The Boy Scouts meet on Tuesdays here at our Veterans Hall at seven, if anybody's interested.
And if I may add, you know, Boy Scouts also have helped with other parks, doing the facelifts to the parks with all the baseball fields, uh, fencing, uh, building the park structures, the benches, uh, trash cans, barbecues, all that, doing the concrete. So they uh, even at this age that they're um doing stuff that normally kids should be playing, doing other stuff, but they're helping with their community. So they do give back a lot. We're very fortunate to have them in town. So thank you, guys.
I would also say that uh, we are represented. Uh, I am. Uh, two of my grandsons are on that troop. So uh, we, they do a lot and it's, it's greatly appreciated with all the effort with the volunteers as well, so.
Thank you, boys.
Well, I uh, only thing I gotta report is I did re- uh, attend like promised to the law enforcement relay. Um, can't remember all the law enforcement relay they had this uh Saturday. And when I said yes, I would show up, um, I didn't realize it was at five thirty in the morning. Um, but I was there. Um, it was nice to see a lot of agencies come from out of town. Uh, if I remember right, there was even agencies that came from uh Minnesota. I think they were from back east somewhere over there. Um, so there, there was teams from all over the place came down to uh, to represent in Imperial County. So it was nice to see that, the camaraderie that you got to see, the different agencies just working together, running together all for the same cause. So it was real nice. So appreciate that and um, thank you guys for all the hard work that you guys do.
All right, I have no, nothing to report. Um, so we'll move on to item J one, which is the adjournment of this regular city council meeting at seven forty-four PM. Um, until our next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, June seventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM.